Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this March 6th, 2018. We have six of seven Planning Commissioners in attendance. We excuse Commissioner Corbin England. And as we get started this evening, we'd like to welcome staff and the public, noting that we have many scouts in the audience. We have Alex Hoyle, who's going to come up to the podium and lead us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alex. We appreciate that. First item on the consent calendar this evening is approval of minutes from our previous meeting of February 20th, 2018. Commissioner Luthy.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Luthy, a second by Commissioner Quinney. Do we have any discussion in the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero, which brings us to the first public hearing this evening. Friends for Life Foundation, 8539 South Redwood Road, and number B isn't boy, conditional use permit for adult daycare. General in a PO zone, Friends for Life Foundation, Cole Morley is the applicant. You hear this evening, Mr. Morley? Please feel welcome to come forward and present your application.
Sir, thank you for having me. I didn't really know exactly what I needed to prepare. I gave everything that I had to the commission to present. Basically, Friends for Life Foundation, we are an adult daycare program, very similar to Crystalis, Turner &amp; Rise, Northeastern Services, not sure if you've ever been familiar with those kind of agencies. We work at the state of Utah to accommodate this adult disabled population. When parents basically leave their home for work, or whatever have you, we are basically the program that would come in and pick up these individuals from their homes, take them out of the community, do activities with them. This location that we're attempting to get approval for is basically a place to reside where we can have lunch and hang out for an hour, and then at that point, we would take them home. So, that's as far as Friends for Life and as far as adult daycare goes, that's exactly what would be happening in that location.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Morley? None at this time.
Oh, I've got some.
Oh, you've got some.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
So, I was the one that asked for the floor plan.
Right.
On the floor plan, and I don't see the rooms marked, so I'm, do we, which ones, what are the rooms that you have on your floor plan? I mean, which one's the kitchen? Which one's the bathroom?
Right. That probably would have been a help to mark those. I apologize. I'm not an engineer by trade. So, there's the two rooms in the back that you can kind of see, the left and right. I guess it'd be west and east, right? I don't know how you're looking at it. Those are basically, the one room to be used for crafts, the other one would be for a microwave and mini-fridge, basically. We don't need a kitchen. The parents send these individuals with lunches, and so we don't exactly require any type of cooking, you know, food damage permit, that's not required for our license that we use, nor are we going to be handling that kind of substance. Then the room in front of that would be kind of like the lounge room, as you will, where our clients would relax until they're ready to go home.
Storage room?
Lounge room.
But you don't have a storage room?
Oh, you're asking for storage. We haven't really had any need for storage. Again, this is a very basic center. This isn't a place where we're going to be hanging out all day necessarily. We are, what's called a community-based program is what our code is approved for, and so the idea is to get these individuals out in the community, and so we really don't have any, aside from maybe some, what do you call them? I forgot the word. Sometimes we create like a little bin, sensory bins. Aside from, you know, having some sensory bins for them to play with and work on, we really don't need storage, so.
And, so, are you saying that the adult daycare rules under the Utah Code don't apply to you?
How do you mean? Sorry.
Well, I've looked at the Utah Administrative Code, and it requires, you know, certain number of snacks and food to be provided, and lunches, and those kind of things, and I'm just wondering how, that generally is required in the adult daycare rules. That's what I'm wondering about.
Right. So, we're in the exact same program, and we have another location in Lehigh, so I've been in a very similar medium like this. For our, since we're community-based, we're not providing any type of lunches, which the families are aware of. It doesn't require those things, and in the states, we're very much aware of that, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Mr. Morley. We'll save some time for you after the public comments section if there's anything else that needs to be addressed. And, Mr. Forsyth, you have this item for the city?
Yes, thank you. So, Friends for Life Foundation, as the applicant's explained, is an adult daycare. They're going to be operating within the PO zone, which is a professional office zone. So, as such, most uses that are typically not your typical professional office are usually considered a conditional use, and in this case, adult daycare is considered a conditional use. So, you can kind of see from the airline map here, mostly the surrounding areas, single-family residential, with the exception of the area to the north, which is just a large office building, pretty similar to this office complex. So, the daycare will be operating on the main floor of Suite B, and kind of as the applicant's explained, just within that room layout. So, everything's on the ground floor. The entrance to main, that main floor is provided by a short ramp that's ADA accessible, and then that ramp connects to two handicap parking spaces, which have a loading area where the business's only single van will be using to drop off and pick up some of their clients. So, we figured that's a pretty safe and reasonable way to do that. It'll be located outside the drive aisles, so there won't be any pedestrian vehicle conflicts there. In terms of parking, we did a parking study on the entirety of the complex, so this business alone is required to have one space per employee. They'll have three employees, so thus they're required to have three parking spaces. So, that combined with all the other businesses within that complex are required to have a total of 105 spaces. And then we counted up all the parking spaces in there. They have 127, so they'll have at least 20 or more spaces surplus. So, other than that, we really don't anticipate a whole lot of impacts. Business will be operating just at this location only for about three hours a day. And then, this space is pretty far from any residential home, so there's really not going to be an impact as far as noise or other things like that. So, based on these findings and those explained in the staff report, staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for the Friends for Life Foundation located at 8539 South Redwood Road, Suite B, with the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to the public comments section. If anyone would like to speak on this item, you're welcome to do so. Mr. Morley, I noticed you filled out a card to speak. Is that just in case there was any other public comment, or?
Just in case I want to speak.
No problem. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and bring it back for discussion among the Planning Commissioners. Commissioner Green.
How do we want to do this? All right, I'll do this if anybody's okay with the motion, with a couple of specific findings and amendments to the conditional approval. So, I'm going to, based on the information and findings set forth in this staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for Friends for Life Foundation located at 8539 South Redwood Road, subject to conditions one through seven in the staff report, adding condition eight, that Friends for Life must meet and be in compliance with all state adult daycare rules, including the adult daycare licensing rules as put forth by the state of Utah, and just on a specific finding and criteria number three, that the finding is that the 891 square feet is adequate for an adult daycare and not just a typical office building setting.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Hatch. Discussion to the motion. Mr. Murray, do you find any problem with mandating that?
No, because whatever's applicable is applicable if they fit into one category versus another, and we're just saying whatever those applicable requirements are would fit, you know. So, with that in mind, I think it's perfectly fine. I'm not sure what's going on. It is the right of the law.
Okay.
Starting. But, yeah, I don't have any search.
Great, thank you, Mr. Murray. Any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan. Commissioner Green.
Now, I'd just like to, since the vote's over, Wes, I want to make a comment here just for the record. As I understand it, Friends for Life Foundation is a for-profit organization. Typically, and I don't play a lawyer on TV in Utah, but typically the term "foundation" is used for not-for-profit organizations. And so, what I'm going to ask the city attorney to do is to take a look at that under the licensing code, because Title IV requires that there be no misleading stuff, no misleading in a business application, and make sure that the city wasn't misled because this was a foundation, and that the city business license wasn't waived for a not-for-profit group based on the name. Does that make sense? Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Thank you, Mr. Murray. No, thank you for being thorough. Brings us to our next public hearing item, and just for, by way of information to see how we will proceed with this, items three, four, and five deal with Synergy Dance Academy. They deal with different buildings, so there are three different conditional use permits that are being applied for this evening, since the permit would run with the building if by chance in the future something happens with one building being sold. Thank you for bringing these together, applicant and city staff, so that we could consider them instead of piecemeal. We can look at it at a full campus. So, what we'll do is have the applicant, Ms. Mortensen, address all three items. On the agenda would be numbers three, four, and five, and then we'll have the staff presentation on all three items. But then we will open up the public comments section, one by one, and then we will vote as a Planning Commission after all of that. So, these are separate items, but we're going to be sharing the conversation, then taking action at the conclusion of the applicant and staff reports. So, Ms. Mortensen, please, please offer your application.
Yes, thank you for having us, and I also want to welcome the scouts. They happen to be from my neighborhood, which was a fun surprise when we got here today. And this is Megan Honey, and we own Synergy Dance Academy, and we would like to have a conditional use permit. And as you said, it's kind of a unique situation because we are in three different buildings, and with that comes with some challenges. And the two main challenges is parking, and we are willing to put in more parking, and Mark's been nice enough to help us find the best places to put in those parking spots, as well as we're going to revamp the way we do our drop-off pickup situation, and we're going to continue to make sure that the students are safe, and we're going to hire some crossing guards, some additional staff, to help if kids have to go from like one building to the other, that they'll be able to do so safely. And we think that this will be a great addition to the community. We've both taught dance in West Jordan for years and years and years, and at the high school level and the private sector, and we love what we do, and we love working with kids, and we're willing to do whatever improvements that the city would like us to do so that we can continue to make a difference. And I'd like to answer any questions that any of you would have at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. Any questions for the applicant this evening?
You want to leave that we have staff?
Well, the question needs to be asked to her about the hours.
Sure. Okay.
Commissioner Luthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in full disclosure, we've had this discussion in our pre-meeting, and three of us, myself, the commissioner's missing today, as well as Chairman Pack, all have students that go to Synergy. So, we are well acquainted with Synergy, and we think you guys run a great business.
Thank you.
We are very concerned, however, with the, obviously, the problems that you're looking at, as far as parking, and drop off, and pickup, and all of that. I think that this is a great start with providing dedicated drop-off/pickup zones, which really wasn't there before, as well as freeing up some additional parking. We kind of discussed in the pre-meeting some other possible ideas to kind of run by you and see what you guys would think. We had a previous applicant for a different dance studio that was up here several months ago, that had kind of discussed that one of the ways that they found to make this a little bit more easy in the transition was to stagger the times of the classes. She found that it was best for her to stagger start and stop times, meaning the one, all the class started at seven, and they were done at 7:15, and the next class didn't start till 7:30, so that they were completely separate. Another possible would be to have half the classes in the building start at the half-hour, and half the classes in the building start at the hour, so that now you've got half the amount of people that are going to be doing the drop-off/pickup all at the exact same time. So, we're hoping that you'd be open to-
Yeah, that definitely is.
-a timing suggestion to add one more way of, I've been there. I've tried to go in, and you're hoping that you don't hit the kid as you try to back out, and then you look the other direction, and you're like, I can't see what I'm doing to turn right because cars are packed all the way along that road, and you're just fingers crossing that nobody's there as you go, and it can be a little frightening. So, that's one of the items that we had discussed. I don't know-
We've also thought about-
Okay.
-something like that, and right now, that might be hard to do just because everyone has their schedule set, but we, like, in the future, that is something that we're planning on doing.
Okay.
Starting in June.
Okay.
I'll hit mine with Scott.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point for the applicant? Commissioner Green.
I'll ask. You mentioned crossing guards. Tell me more about that.
So, when we have a group of kids that need to cross the street, they're assigned an adult that goes with them, and then on top of that, there's also somebody who will, and this is who we would hire. We would hire somebody who's out there just in case somebody decides to cross the street on their own.
Every hour.
Every time there's in-between classes.
Like all the interested?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? All right, we'll save some time for you after the public comments section if there's anything else to address.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Forsyth, you have these three items for the city.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. So, it's kind of hard to see on the map here since this presentation was set up for three individual items, so I'll kind of do the best I can to explain this, but-
Thank you.
So, the site that's shown here, that's the westernmost property. On this one, she'll be conducting a dance studio out of the entirety of the building, so that includes an upper floor and the main floor. And then, so the second location will be the property next door, just to the east. In that building, they'll be occupying just the western half of that, so upstairs and downstairs. So, and then the third location will be across the street here on the corner of 9860 South and 6045 West, just across the street there. So, as you can see from the map, everything's located within the M1 zone, so as such, dance studios are kind of the atypical use that you see in some of these industrial areas, and so those require a conditional use permit. So, some of the surrounding uses, a lot of them are primarily industrial in nature, so to the west, you've got landscaping contracting business, to the north is a warehouse, to the east on that corner there, that's a tow yard, and then across the street, you've got some vacant lots there. One's being used for storage, the other one is vacant next door. So, so I'm looking at the space furthest to the west there, as shown on the map, pretty much as the applicant said, we're looking mostly at parking and drop-off impacts. So, in order to mitigate those, we've come up with a few suggestions. So, one, the parking is not, at least in its current state, is not quite compliant with the parking requirements for dance studios, so they're going to need to pave the northeast corner of that lot with six parking spaces in order to bring that up to compliance. Now, that parking combined with the parking next door will actually bring the parking into compliance for both this building and the building to the east. Now, as far as drop-off goes, the way it's configured now, the parking spaces are right in front of the building, and the drive aisle is behind them, so we'd really like to reverse that and shift the parking stalls further south, so that the drop-off area is right next to the building, and that kids aren't crossing the street and risk getting hit by cars. So, this is kind of the plan to be the main drop-off point for these two buildings, and then the kids that attend the location next door can simply be dropped off at this main building, and then just walk across the drive aisle to get to the other building. So, as the applicant's explained before, we'd like to see some crossing guards out there just, again, to kind of coordinate some of those crossings, not only across the street, but between buildings as well, in case anyone decides to use the rear parking lot. So, I'm just going to fast-forward here to the site across the street. So, in this location, she's going to be occupying three lease spaces out of there, so, again, the parking and requirements and the drop-off is going to be an issue there. So, in order to mitigate those issues on this site, there's really no drop-off location right now, so in order to create one, we'd like them to install basically sidewalk extension. You can see on the map that it goes all the way out to the curb, and then to use that frontage along 6045 West as a kind of an on-street drop-off point, so the kid, basically the cars can pull up to that sidewalk, drop their kids off, and then go down here to that stud street, turn around in that access, and hopefully keep that traffic flowing pretty well. So, in order to keep that area clear of parking, we've also, we're also requesting that there be no parking signs installed there, just to make it clear that that's a drop-off only point, and to keep that traffic moving smoothly. So, as far as the parking requirements go, right now, they're required, at this location, they're required to have 29 spaces, but onsite, they only have about 23, so in order to meet those requirements, right now, it's, as you can kind of see here in the back, rear parking lot, there's a kind of a striped loading area. That can actually be converted to three parking spaces, so we're requesting that the applicant get that done. And then there's also space in between the dumpster enclosure and the building for two parking spaces, so we can put some there, and to bring, to add one more parking space, they're going to need to put a parallel space next to the building as shown on that area. That'll actually need to be pulled away from the building about three feet, just in order to account for door clearances. So, as long as those designs are followed, that should meet all zoning criteria for back-out space, parking dimensions, and things like that. So, based on these findings and those explained further in the staff report for Synergy Dance Academy 1, 2, and 3, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permits for Synergy Dance Academy number 1, number 2, and number 3, located at 6061 West, 6078, and 606102 West, 9860 South, with the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Questions for staff commencing with Commissioner Quinney?
I don't know how you kept all that together.
I don't either.
Two questions. One, I'm assuming all the improvements are a responsibility of the applicant. How much, is the city doing any of this?
No, this would need to be done by, you know, the applicant or the property owner, someone who isn't the city.
Including the no parking signs?
Yeah.
Including the no parking signs?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had is related to the conversation we had downstairs regarding the conditional use permit. We talked about doing a shorter term and having it come back to review. Does that need to come back in front of us every time, or can that be something that's just reviewed by staff so that she doesn't have to get on an agenda? How does that work?
If we feel maybe a bit about it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Green.
Will you go back to the one that's got the two buildings? The pitch, that one?
That's fine.
So, with the one drop-off point, with the one drop, with the one drop-off point, where are they going to walk to get to Building 2? To the one to the east?
So, they'd be dropped off right on that sidewalk in front of the building to the west, and then they just basically walk along that sidewalk and then cross that drive aisle. So, basically, they'd be moving laterally.
I guess, I guess my question is, if there's a parking lot or a parking space right there, is that a parking space right there on the corner? If we, you know, you can see where I'm talking about on the southeast corner of building number 2? My pointer, my pointer's not working.
Where's that?
Turn the lights off.
You can't see it. So, but right there on the southeast corner of building number 2, right? Keep going to the right a little bit. There's a parking space right there, just above your pointer.
Oh, an angle space.
If that parking spot were removed, and we had them paint a- If that parking spot were removed and we had them paint a crosswalk there, if we remove that parking spot, is that going to cause any problems with the parking requirement?
No, it shouldn't. As long as they're using this site and the site next door as a shared parking arrangement, they should be okay on parking.
Because I think probably for safety with kids crossing, if we put a crosswalk there, I'm just thinking that that would be more obvious to say, you can't park here, get your car out of the way, kids are going to come across here. So that was, that was my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy.
On the same area, I'm almost wondering, the discussion's been had with just the massive amount of people that are coming and going at the same time. The idea of, I realize that they're only in half of the building to the east, but why not extend that drop-off to go in front of both buildings? Have this be coned off the middle driveway so that the middle driveway was not accessible? You drop off along anywhere along that, you provide that striping that you had talked about. And now you have a much longer lead time to be able to drop these kids off and get back out. So that it's not, I mean, that reduces a lot of the amount of kids that are going in compared to just in front of one little building.
Commissioner Hatch.
I'm sorry, it's an unrelated comment. I just had another idea, so continue with yours, sorry.
Any other discussion to Commissioner Luthy's idea?
The question that I would have is, the question that I would have is how many parking spots would we eliminate by doing that? And would we keep the number of parking spots? So I guess that would be the question that I'd ask with that, but I like the idea.
I think you could just shift on that.
I don't think you're losing any. I think they just shift like the other ones shifted, just along the landscape barrier. So you're keeping the same parking. You're now providing a dedicated drop-off space that really you could start over here. I mean, in elementaries, this is very similar to an elementary drop-off. That edge over there, that's the east edge of the driveway, there's no reason that that whole space couldn't act as a drop-off. And now you've got even more places for people to be able to back up into. The only tricky part about that is because of the current situation with drop-off and pickup at the exact same time, is that you're going to get people in there that are going to sit and wait for their kid while the other people want to just keep going through just for dropping off. The in and out of that might be a little bit tricky.
Good point. As we've noted, there aren't a lot of places to go around there. You're probably going to be staying there because it would take you just as long to get to Jordan Landian and back without being able to shop, so to speak. Any other thoughts on that traffic pattern, which is a, it's an interesting idea here. We're not trying to dictate how Ms. Mortensen runs your business, but we're trying to look out for the public interest and safety here within the purview of our responsibility. Commissioner Quinney.
Yeah, I think, I like the idea of the extended driveway there. I think that all of these ideas are things that she, that we need to definitely have considered, but they can also be things that we review in that six-month timeframe on the conditional use. If it's working, it's great. If it's not, you know, not. But I think that, I think that's a great idea.
Commissioner Luthy.
The only problem with that is I think you just said that it wouldn't be us that would be reviewing it.
We can make it us. I just asked. I just asked that if we...
So the discussion that had been had beforehand was because it's a unique situation and because these are all kind of out-there ideas to try to make the campus work a little bit better in this area, that what if we implement some of them and then readdress it in a period of six months or a year so that we can make sure things are still working? That's the thought process behind that comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney. Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering if you say staff review it, could we make it a condition that it come back as a business item instead of a public hearing in six months to see if there's any other problems that we need to address?
Yeah, we could do that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think that would be more respectful of the applicant's time and staff time.
Yeah, and the applicant wouldn't be required to apply. We would, we would diskeep track of that and then we would bring it back. And she'd certainly be invited, but it wouldn't require a whole application or a fee or something like that.
Great, great.
It'd be on us.
Save time and money, be respectful there. Great, yeah, because we know all of this is a mix of time and money and safety. Anything else? Commissioner Hanson?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Hatch.
I have a question regarding the other businesses. I know we talked last time about site number 1, that this is on off-hours. How about for site number 3? Is that off-hours as well, so there's not a problem with? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Luthy.
The only other discussion that we had in our pre-meeting that I think needs to be addressed here is the parking on-street. Because of parking in general being something that's needed in the area, people are parking right up to the corner of the driveway so there's no sight distances to being able to be seen either direction. I know that you send out, because I received said letter, trying to address how people need to go through, but we probably need to look at some sort of a way to keep people from being, you know, keep them away to the West Jordan standards of, did you say 60 feet from the driveway?
It depends on the classification of the road. I'd have to check on that. Generally, you want it about, if it's a, like you'll, you'll see on residential roads, where two residential roads intersect, you'll see them within 20 feet, 15 feet. On industrial roads and larger roads, you'd want to get at least 30 feet.
I think that's completely reasonable. If we could keep people out of that first 20 feet on either side of the driveways just so that the people turning out can see what they're doing, I think that would make a big difference.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
That was, that was going to be my question. Can you go back to a zoom-in of the two buildings? That one. Well, no, it's the other one that shows the west building more because that's where the exit's going to be yet. So, given, given this street, and I guess this is a question for the city attorney and for the city staff. If we required on that west entrance to block out 20 feet going west and 20 feet going east, can we, can we do that and have them put, paint the curb red and put no parking zone on that corner? Or is that something the city has to do?
Yes, the city would have to do that and we would not let a private business paint any of the street. I don't, I don't know whether that could be coned off Duncan or Nate or Paul, how you feel about that, but painting would be up to the city to do. And this city does not do a lot of red curbs, thank goodness, because I've worked in the city where that was the main color, it was red, and it gets everywhere.
Well, and I don't want to put a lot of red there. I just, if we had enough to, like what you said, because I have to tell you, I wish my business did as good as yours did, that I had to worry about this many cars going past my business every day. Well, they do, but they just don't stop. I have the entire, I have the entire 70th South when it's not under construction. They just don't pull into the parking lot. Yeah, I should have a dance studio instead of a water store. But I'm just wondering if we, if we had the city, you know, if we do part of the condition that keeps people back 15, 20 feet just to make that entrance safer and the city did paint it, I'm just wondering if that's, if that's that big of a deal there for the city to paint?
Like Larry said, generally, we don't do paint. We use signage instead.
Okay.
But we could look at that and come up with something that works.
A sign would work too. No parking between the signs. I mean, I'm okay with that because then, signs are fairly cheap to drop in the, you know, drop in right there on the curb. And that people would just get the message, look, you got to leave the driveway open for, and if the city's going to put in a sign, then that won't be a condition that we can probably add, then, would it? I mean, if we decide that the city puts in a sign, then that doesn't need to be a condition.
Unfortunately, the planning commission doesn't direct the city.
I know we don't, but we could, we could recommend that without putting...
Yeah, and I'd make a recommendation as long as it's not a condition of approval placed upon the applicant.
No, I don't want to put, I don't want to put if there's a street sign, I don't want to put a condition on the applicant. And then my, then I have one last question.
Yes. So, my thought on this, I was thinking cones, but then he said signs, but what about just having the applicant do sign, like sandwich boards? That way, when she no longer does this, we're not, signs become more permanent. It affects everybody there, but if she has sandwich boards, she can just put them out in the spaces to say, you can't park here. Then when she leaves, we don't have a need for them anymore. It's kind of the same thing with the conditional use. When she leaves, the conditional use goes away.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Green, anything else?
Yes, and the last question, because I know we dealt with it before, is just the occupancy. So we'll ask the fire department, just tell us about the occupancy of the three buildings and the limitations so that we know where we're at with that.
Sure. Lane Western, myself, went out and looked at all three buildings, did some rough sketches, figured out how many occupants can be in each studio. The fire code and the building code deals with the assembly rooms and not necessarily the hallways or lobbies or anything like that. So we've been able to roughly establish how many occupants can be in a particular room at any one time. As far as the numbers that are standing and waiting for their kids to be done, there's really nothing that we can do as far as enforcement or requirements for the hallways. I understand Commissioner Luthy is concerned with the number of people that are, that are there possibly obstructing exits and things like that. But we don't have really the enforcement capability to force people to wait outside. We just worry about the occupancies of each of those rooms. And unfortunately, I didn't, I wasn't able to dress up my hand drawings because I am Picasso. I can finish those up and give them to the planning commission if you desire for the other two buildings. We did the one west building of which you've been able to see the number of occupants for that building. So that's what we would go by if anything, if we need to go in and clear the building, we'd go by the number of occupants in the assembly rooms.
Commissioner Green?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. So then just to clarify, when a number's established, like let's say 60 approximately students in the room, that doesn't take into account parents and siblings of the students who might be congregating in the hallways?
Exactly right. We only look at how many can be in a particular room. Hallways, the assumption is it's a transitory area that people come and go and they clear out, they clear the building or they go into the room and they stand. So any, any type of clearing the hallways of spectators or whatever it may be would be up to the owner to enforce that.
Thank you. And we'll address that with the applicant when we have her come back up because I know our concern is that it's not a transitory flow-through, but it's sedentary. We're waiting for the lesson to be over and then parents with the next lesson, they get there 10 minutes early so that they're not late. Now we've got double the amount of parents and children just to make sure everybody's safe. Okay, thank you, Mr. Brockbank. Commissioner Hatch, you mentioned that you have another item that you wanted to address? Okay, thank you. I believe we're to the public comment section now, aren't we? It's been so long, I can't remember. Is that where we are? Thank you. So if anyone would like to speak on item 3, well, we're just going to do this one item at a time, correct, Mr. Murray? That'd be the cleanest way to do that.
That's correct, yeah. We'll just call maybe item number 3 public hearing first.
Thank you. So... Yes, Commissioner Green. Yes, just to let the applicant know, there'll be ample time for you to address any questions or concerns that are brought up during the public comment section or relative to the discussion we've just had with city staff. Thank you, Commissioner Green. So if anyone would like to speak on item number 3 on the agenda, which is Synergy Dance Academy number 1, 6102 West, 9860 South, conditional use permit for personal instruction service in an M1 zone, please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section for item number 3 and open it for item number 4, Synergy Dance Academy number 2, 6078 West, 9860 South, conditional use permit for personal instruction service in an M1 zone. And we'll close that public comment section and move on to opening the public hearing for item number 5, Synergy Dance Academy number 3, 6061 West, 9860 South, conditional use permit for personal instruction service in an M1 zone. And we will close that public comment section and ask if the applicants would like to come up and address any items that were brought up in the recent conversation with city staff.
I don't know if you want to pull that picture back up, the 6102 West. So between the two buildings, we're going to put a little like crosswalk right there to go between the two buildings. And we'll remove that line so there's not a parking spot there. And then where you see like it's the furthest west, we can put one parallel, we were planning on putting one parallel spot, so a little bit further to the west, like on the other side of the building. Yeah, like right about there. We'd do a parallel spot right there and remove this other one that you guys were talking about, and we'll put a crosswalk right there.
Shannon, sorry, I should clarify. Even if you do remove one of those spaces, if you've got, if you've got six spaces up in that northwest corner that you were going to pave, you would actually meet the parking requirements, so you'd be right...
Even if we use the last, like, because we can't use the last one either on the diagonal.
Right.
Oh, we'd still be, we would still be okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, because we take into account the total existing parking. So basically, we'd be looking at everything as a whole, whether you're going to use it or not.
Okay. And I really like your...
So you just barely need it, but you'd be okay?
We would, yeah. And I do like your idea of moving both of them. I think the reason why Mark didn't have us do that is there is a building or a business on the other side of the building. So I think otherwise that would work really well. I don't know if that is an option. I think that would be great.
There is times too, though, that their trucking equipment will block that driveway too.
But that's, that's true, but that's like not when we're there. It's when... And then the other thing I wanted to mention was we are breaking ground, like on our, on a brand-new building that we're building, hopefully right off of Prosperity and New Bingham. That's kind of been submitted to the city for that zoning. So we are going to be out of here in about 18 months. So if we want to do like, if we want to, like you were talking about the six-month, it might be better to do it a little bit longer. Six months puts us right about summer and summer's really low-key. So maybe you want, we want to do it in, I don't know, nine months? So we're like back in like the busy season, if that makes more sense? Because if you come in the middle of August, it's going to be not very much.
Great, thank you. So you addressed the parking. The other two main concerns, drop-off and pickup, and then also the occupancy. Did you want to speak on any of those? You don't have to, but we just wanted to give you the opportunity.
As far as the occupancy, like I walked through it with the fire marshal and he said, you know, you have about this many students in the room and all those numbers seemed right on. As far as people picking up and dropping off, there are a few hours each day where that's super busy. And that seems to be like the 4:30 class and the 5:30 class. Other than that, we don't have a lot of parents coming in. Once they're at a certain age, parents usually just kind of like drive up. And I think once we move the parking, like how this is, there's going to be less people coming in because they can just go right to the curb and their kid can jump in the car and they won't feel like they have to come in the building to actually pick their kid up. And for the three- and four-year-old classes, we're giving each of the parents like a sign so they'll drive by and they just put the sign in their car of who their kid is. sign, so they'll drive by and they just put the sign in their car of who their kid is. And then, the teacher will walk the kid out to the car. The kid gets in the car and drives away. So, then, the parent doesn't have to come in for those three- and four-year-olds, like, at all.
Well, very good, thank you. That'd facilitate more efficient speed here, pickup, drop-off, and safety. And anything else that you would like to mention? How, how about a brief testimony on your experience of, it's not that type of testimony, Larry. Your testimony on...
I'm just passing.
Because that's what we do here, right? On your experience with the parents that, because you're mentioning some that will just come up, drop off, leave, but we, at least, it's been our experience, Commissioner Luthy and, and me, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to speak for you, that parents do stay, either they're staying in their car because they can't go anywhere else and shop in the area, or they do come inside. So, we're not, we, we just want to make sure that we get your idea on this.
So, some, some students come for one hour a week. Most of our kids actually come for long stretches of time, so they'll come from four-thirty to seven-thirty. So, that is time for parents to drop their kid off, go home, cook dinner, and then come back three hours later. So, there, we don't have, not every single class turns over every hour. So, that's why there are some busier hours, when we have more of, like, the little ki-, that's why the earlier times are a little bit more busy, because the younger kids come earlier. They do, like, the four-thirty and typically the five-thirty hour. So, we were, we were also thinking in future schedules to not put so many three- and four-year-old classes at the same time, to do them more, like, some at four-thirty, and then another one at five-thirty, and maybe across the street, you've got a four-thirty and a five-thirty. Then, that's gonna help not so many people come every single hour. But once you get into those later hours, those kids are coming for long stretches of time.
Okay, thank you, and maybe that's where, I, I appreciate that clarification, because my experience is, my, my kids have just been there for a one-hour session. So, that, that definitely helps explain. Let's see, Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Chair. In our pre-meeting, we did discuss with the fire marshal, the occupancy, and it was for just the rooms that you're using for your instruction. And he recommended, you know, with the halls, they couldn't be crowded, because that would be your exit and entrance areas. If you had a reason to call the fire department, or a reason to, to have an emergency, that it would be a recommendation that there shouldn't be strollers there, or bicycles, or that type of thing. They should be left outside.
And that's typically not a problem. And also, we have lots of, like, cubbies, where the kids, like, put their, their bags when they come in, so they don't have their bags just sitting in the hall, although that is a problem, and I have to come through and I have to tell everybody sometimes to put their bags, you know, like, I'm kind of their mom, like, "Clean up your stuff. Put everything away."
Thank you.
Thank you. And tell us, you, you were mentioning that you'd be amenable to staggering the start and end times. That's not an egregious imposition on your business if that were to occur?
No, I think that would be fine.
If ten minutes here happened on, okay. Thank you. I think that covers everything that I'm aware of. Commissioner Luthy?
Um, yes. So, I'm super excited to hear that you are finding a facility that might work a little bit better. Because I know you guys have just been growing at such a rapid pace that it's been hard to keep up with.
Right, so this, a lot of this is kind of like a make-it-work, and so we can, right. And we don't want to leave our landlord hanging that we've signed leases with, so it's kind of been a timing issue, but it's, it's time.
I think that's fantastic. I still would, e- even knowing that the person on the east is a separate business and everything else, I still would strongly encourage looking at restriping that area to make that drop-off a little longer. I am, I live really close to here, so I am the parent that just drops them off, whether they're three, four, or whatever. I'm like, "Peace out, have fun," and I can go home. But part of the problem is that when I would try to stay, it was so crazy crowded. I think that's what's kind of got that discussion going, of the areas where the parents can wait tend to get a little bit out of control. So, if there's anything you can do on your end, to discuss with the parents, maybe mitigating, bringing, I don't know, all of their kids, or we have seen strollers in there and different things that just make it a little bit hard to be able to go to and from, and then the kids are bouncing through. So, that's where that discussion is kind of coming from.
Yeah, we can certainly, yeah, we can certainly communicate that as best that we can. And we have tried to make our waiting areas as uncomfortable as possible, so that people don't stay. And that did seem to help a little bit, to take out any soft chairs that, or any televisions where they could put, we used to have televisions where they could put movies on, and we just took all of that stuff out.
Okay.
Very good. Well, thank you for being so amenable, cooperative, forthcoming, transparent. Thank you for your patience answering all our questions. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Yes, I have one more question. So, regarding this parking, the front parking in, what is that? That's the, the sixty-seventy-eight. Since there is another business in there, do we just ask them if it's okay if we move all the parking, because it's kind of shared parking, like, in the morning? Like, is, I mean, do we have, I guess, do we have to apply to do that?
That'd be a question for staff in the biz-, in the property owner.
No, um, basically, just obviously want to check with the property owner, because it's their property. But, yeah, you can work that out with them. There's no city permits that you need, or anything like that. You will need to meet certain dimensions of the parking, but I can, this, this diagram, I can update it and just get that information to you, so we do it the right way.
But essentially, if we just mirrored what they did there and just put it on the other side, right?
Pretty much, yeah, exactly.
Okay. And then, just cone off that middle drive when you're there?
Yeah, and obviously, you can still stay there during your less busy times, but during those times where it's a real problem, having that coned off, so you're forcing them one way and the other, would make a big difference.
And that's something our crossing guards can put out when they come?
Exactly, yeah. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Well, let's bring it back to the commission for any other discussion that we need to talk about. If not amenable to a motion, if anyone wants to craft that and articulate maybe another item or two on the length of...
Be- before we, before we make a motion-
Yes.
Maybe we can come up with, if we're going to add additional conditions of approval, let's see if we can come up with what we think they are that we can semi-hall agree on, before we try to make a motion and try to tack those on one at a time, or do what we do. Can, can we do that? Might make it easier.
Right, thank you. That's what I was trying to allude to, if we can craft how we want that to work. Ms. Mortensen, very forthcoming, saying, "Hey, you know, might not want to come back in the summer. You might not get a, a true feel of what it is." So, we appreciate that honesty. Commissioner Luthy?
I think that by about October, we should know whether or not it's working correctly. So, I think that maybe if we just specifically say that we'd like to see it back in October to have a, how it's gonna go. I think that that's several months in, all the changes should already have been worked out, if there's any kind of, there's always a little bit of a learning curve with the new system, and you're teaching the parents as much as you're teaching anybody else. So, I think October is probably soon enough to be able to say that.
Is October, is October long? We're only talking...
They start in August.
Seven months.
Yeah, but, so, the site stuff could be started now, but the actual timing of the classes and all that won't be probably happening until you start back up in August, correct?
That's, that's why I was-
June?
Is, is seven, is seven months enough, or should we go to December and call it nine?
I don't know that we need to go all the way to December.
Something the applicant talked about. She mentioned nine months, and if they're gonna be building a new building in eighteen, we're looking at the halfway mark. I'm okay with nine, I'm okay with seven or eight, but that's why I just wonder. She mentioned nine, so that's why I asked.
Commissioner Quinney?
So, just to kind of follow up on this, other than the condition for the, or the, the conversation about the conditional use permit itself, do we have any additional conditions that we're looking at putting on this? I think everything else, she's agreed to, she's working on it. I don't think we need to make a big mountain out of this whole entire thing, right?
I think it was just a timeframe.
Can we just do this with just a timeframe?
Mm-hmm, that, that's my-
Are we okay with that?
That's my thought. Commissioner Green?
I, I, I think, I, I mean, because they, they already are talking about doing it. I think we ought to incorporate the crosswalk and the crossing guard and the conditional use, and then we can re, then we can revisit it. If, if it's not where we-
In the conditions?
Is it in the conditions?
Yes.
For the, for the crossing guard crosswalk?
Why didn't, did I miss that?
Condition four.
Okay. Well, it talks about the, but it doesn't talk about the crosswalk. So, I'd, I'd like to add the crosswalk to the, you know, on the south, south, south end, I'd like to see the crosswalk. I think-
So, we're seeing crosswalk and length of time?
That's what I'd like to see.
And it should be duly noted, we did mention this in the pre-meeting, that the applicant operates a well-running business, fire hasn't had to come out, we haven't had any accidents there. We're just trying to ensure we don't have any accidents there with the growing business, three buildings, large campus. Commissioner Luthy?
I joked that I almost hit somebody, because they were crossing and I didn't see them, and, yeah, so that's, that's all, that's all this is coming from.
Right, it's just that we're, in a way, putting a square peg in a round hole. This isn't what the buildings were designed for at the beginning, so we're just trying to make sure things are working well. Mr. Gardner?
Um, I just want to make one point, that these conditions of approval need to be, so the applicants are, they need to be done as soon as possible. The six-month or the nine-month, or whatever timeframe you come up with, to be reviewed. I don't want that to make that the benchmark or the goal, to have this stuff done. She's operating in business now, has been operating for a while, so these need to be done in the matter of the next few weeks, and not the next few months.
Oh, good, good point. When I, and maybe, I don't know if any of you were thinking this, I was thinking that we're going to see how it goes for nine months. We're not waiting for nine months for these measures to be implemented, correct? So, let's make sure we add that language. Commissioner Quinney?
I'm just, just trying to simplify this. I'm looking at this, I, condition four says crossing guards shall be employed to coordinate all pedestrian crossings, blah, blah, blah. I just don't see that we need to make an additional mention of crosswalks. It's already included in that condition. In, in, in site two, condition four.
Um, that specific language wasn't included in that condition. It was just the crossing guard itself, so.
It says, it says crossing guards to coordinate all pedestrian crossings. That says crosswalk. I'm just trying to make this simple. We don't throw a bunch of mud at her, that she's gotta go back and clean up. She's agreed to everything, let's just do this, give it a timeframe, a review in nine months, or seven months, and be done with it. That's what I'm trying to do, instead of just throwing a bunch of additional nonsense out there.
Thank you. Does it say anywhere about the crosswalk, though, taking out the, I mean, don't, agreed, we want to simplify, but don't we need to put that in there as a condition that we're gonna take out parking scores?
I think when they're talking crossing guards, and maybe this is where I'm wrong, but I think that they're talking about going across the street, not this one that's going to be between the two buildings on the same side. I think that's the only difference there.
I just see this being all-inclusive, the entire site. We asked for a campus, she's talking about offering crossing guards and crosswalks. It says pedestrian crossings. I think it just applies to everything that we've talked about.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, and the other thing is, we're asking her to extend the drop-off and pickup, but she's got to get permission from that building owner to do that. So, I, I don't know that it's fair to say that's a condition, because she does need their permission. She can't just do it.
Agreed.
Good point, thank you. Commissioner Green?
I, I, I agree. I don't want to impose a condition on the east building. I would like to see that one parking spot on the southeast corner, the, the, the building removed to facilitate the, the, the walk, so.
Did she agree to it, though?
She's agreed to it, but I don't know if that's a condi-, i- if we ought to, to do that as a condition or not.
If, if she's agreed to it, that's good enough. When Mark goes out to look at the, to make sure the conditions, you know, she's an upstanding person. I'm sure she'll live up to everything she's agreed, and so.
Great. Commissioner Luthy?
I, I agree with the drop-off. I don't want to put any kind of an imposition on you to, like, be able to, but I would still strongly suggest that it, whatever you can do to do it, I would do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney?
Anybody else have anything you want to say?
Go for it.
Can I just make a motion?
Please.
All right. So, I'm gonna make a motion applying to all three of these. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move the planning commission to approve the conditional use permit for Synergy Dance Academy number one, number two, and number three, at their respective locations in the M-ones, on what the conditions of approval listed on page two of this report. And the additional language that we would like to see this back sometime in October, just for us to have a chance to review and make sure that everything, traffic-wise, is working. Doesn't apply to everything else, just to, just for us to take a look at it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, includes all the conditions listed in the staff report?
Yes. Page two.
Oh.
Probably page two of each report, I would recognize.
Each report, yeah, so all the conditions. And was there any additional, it was just, the only additional condition was that it be revisited the second meeting in October, I would say.
As a business item, correct?
Right. Yeah, as a business item.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you have a second? Oh.
Yeah, let me just, let me just make sure, the conditions of approval listed on whatever page in each of the three reports. As a, in that condition, that, that revisit in the second meeting of October is a business item only.
Do I get it all?
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
I need to drink the water now.
Commissioner Luthy, seconds. Let's discuss that. Is that clear enough? Do we need to restate that, Julie? Mr. Murray?
And unless Julie has any concerns, it's fine from a legal perspective.
Great. Thank you. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan. Appreciate you being here. Thanks for the impact you make on the community. Which brings us to item number six on the agenda, our last item, text amendment, continued from February twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Amend the two thousand nine city code, section thirteen dash thirteen landscape requirements, adding requirements for landscaping adjacent to future and existing arterial streets. Citywide applicability. City of West Jordan is the applicant.
Thank you, scouts.
Thank you for coming, scouts. Thank you to the leaders. Make sure you tell your leaders thanks, too. And this is Mr. Gardner, having item number six.
Those are big, my audience, wow.
They came through.
You and the staff.
Yeah.
I'm used to that. Things get controversial in a room, and I look around, and everybody's gone, you know, and so. Thanks, Nate, for, for getting my back. So, and the PowerPoint I provided is some diagrams. And first of all, I want to make the disclaimer that none of these diagrams are cross-sections of streets, and they do not require the engineering department to follow the street cross-sections, because that is up to the engineering department to amend. And so, what we're doing within this ordinance is the, is the area out of the public right of way, behind the back of sidewalk, with this ordinance. Now, if street cross-sections need to be amended, that's a different process that the city goes through. It's not, the planning commission doesn't generally make recommendations on street cross-section. That's the engineering that goes to the city council and has that approved. Is, what the planning commission does is they make recommendations on road placements, but not necessarily the technical aspects. So, that's my disclaimer. And so, what I want to read is, the ordinance in capital letter C, this is adopted, adopted street skate plans. I have added a line at the bottom that says, "A street skate plan is also required for all commercial office, manufacturing, institutional, and multi-residential developments abutting arterial streets." The reason I add that, because up in the first part, it says, "The street skate plan is required in those areas where a wall is required between a development." And generally, in commercial areas, we don't require walls. That's generally just in our residential. And so, if you flip over the page, number three, it says, "Street skate plan for new, expanded, and redeveloped, redeveloped areas along arterial streets." The first portion of it is adjacent to residential developments. And it talks about unless part of a previously approved master plan, development plan, or street skate plan. Now, those, what I'm referring to in that case, the Highlands, for instance, with the Highlands master development plan, they approved, the city council, planning commission at that time, and the city council approved a street skate plan for the Highlands. So, if this was to go in along, say, seventy-eight hundred south, abutting the Highlands property, this would not be enforced there, because they have already had a larger four-hundred-and-twenty-acre master plan developed. So, that, that's the reason it says that. And so, getting to the diagrams, if you look at the screen, this was something that I- at the screen, this was something that I had Lori do that shows a cross-section of a typical arterial street. Now, my hope is that the engineering department in certain areas of the city, generally on the west side, will look again at larger park strips and larger sidewalks. We do that in many areas where trails about arterial streets, but, and they used to, a few years back, they had the nine-foot park strip and the 10-foot sidewalk as part of a arterial road cross-section, but that was taken out. And from what I've been able to find, it was generally because they were having difficulty in requiring that much right-of-way width, because it, what it adds is an additional 20 feet of right-of-way dedication. Now, that could be relooked at again when this goes to the city council, but they would have to direct the engineering department or the public works on, if they want to see wider arterial, or wider sidewalks and park strips on newer streets out west. And so, this, this really gets into the meat of the ordinance, and these numbers, look at these numbers, just ignore them, like a nine-foot park strip and a 10-foot sidewalk. There still will be at least a five-foot park strip and a five-foot sidewalk, but the area we're dealing with is between the back of sidewalk, which is always the edge of the right-of-way, to this 10-foot wall. Right now, residential development could build that wall right next to the sidewalk, and that is pretty much status quo in West Jordan. There's a wall right next to a sidewalk. And from the last joint meeting, the planning commission, the city council, they want to see an improved look along the arterial streets. And so, what this ordinance, and as you can read, it says, "The streetscape plan for new," you know, of course, if it's a new street, 90th South, U111, that's a development that's being built along. Expanded streets, say the city expands an arterial street somewhere in the city. Or redeveloped area. Now, redeveloped area along arterial street, for instance, would be the Ganson Lane Development on Redwood Road. That would be a perfect candidate to require a 10-foot landscaped area between the back of sidewalk and the wall. Does anyone have any concerns with that thus far?
May I just ask one question? Is it, even on page one, it talks about the required maintenance of landscaped areas, so it's not just putting it in, but what's the plan exactly for maintaining, as we see on like 4800 West, or 9000 South, or Newbingham Highway, when, when so many trees die and nothing's really done?
And so, then if you read in the ordinance, it says, "So, the planting has to be installed according to the city parks department, urban forester," because that area between the back of sidewalk and the wall will be dedicated to the city of West Jordan. So this is probably where there's going to be some concern at the city council, because what that does is, it becomes the redheaded stepchild of the city of West Jordan. And so, we would be required to take care of that forever, rather than the adjacent property owner, because if we put, there's nothing that works less than making someone maintain an area that's in their backyard behind the wall, because they're really not thinking about it at all, period. Unless there's something going on in there. And so, you know, along these strips, it will have to be dedicated to the city of West Jordan, and that's what the ordinance would say. And so, the city in perpetuity will be taking care of that. And so, that's the reason we want the, now, the parks department is generally okay with it if it's a large enough area, and if it's the type of plants they want in there. I'm sure they're not wild about the maintenance of it, but.
Right, because that's just my concern in this. I mean, I, I, I'm one for beautification, and that's great, it just almost looks like a blight when it's not maintained.
Yes.
So, obviously, the parks department, we need an enhanced budget, and where's that money coming from?
And, you know, and then what happens is, things like the legislature very possibly could hit West Jordan and other south communities with this big fine for not having affordable housing, or homeless shelters, and, and, and so it's going to be difficult. You know, that is one portion of this ordinance, and I readily admit it, that will, may send it down in flames, or it may get altered. And I'm glad the planning commission's fully aware of that, because this area, you know, and if it's just on the west side of, say for instance, we did it on one side of U111, that's still an enormous strip of property. And so, it really will require the, the city council, if they are really serious about this, they'll have to bite off a, a big commitment, you know. And so, but, I'll just continue. And so, the larger landscaped area, larger park strip, of course, that may not occur, but the larger, and this is according to our parks and our urban forester, the more landscaping you have in the area, it provides a larger microclimate that lessens heat stress on plants. What the urban forester has found is that, when you put the wall right adjacent to the sidewalk, and then they plant a park strip, it'd be, particularly on the southern exposures, it becomes so hot that the trees often won't survive. And the plant, or they don't do well, they become stunted, you know. It's almost like they're in a, constantly from, you know, when it warms up in April until when it cools down in November, they're in this constant desert-type environment. And then also, what they have found a few years back, is they went to a plan where they wanted all mulch in the park strips. And so, they do the drip emitter, but they do it right at the base of the tree. And of course, we all learned in elementary school that trees get their water at the drip line, and so they're being watered out at the base, and they're not being watered enough, and so the tree's stunted again. Now, in many cases, it will die, but often it's just stunted, it doesn't grow. And so, what they have found is if they require in these park strips in these areas where there's sun turf, and the tree, and trees and plants are clustered in different areas, then it requires this much more healthy microclimate, and it ends up conserving water, believe it or not, because the trees side more, they shade the ground, and so, and so, they like the, and then, and not to mention that arterial streets are a hostile environment anyway, because there's, you know, have 15, 20,000 cars a day going by at higher rates of speed, and, and it sends all kind of heat from the, the vehicle, plus the, and so this larger area just creates a more, a better environment. And I've seen it in other areas of, well, this city has a good example, like 7800 South, I think, not by where you live, Commissioner Pack, that they did this, and it works well. I've seen it work well in Sandy. I've seen really bad cases in Draper, where it doesn't work well, because they chose to go the more mineral, rather than landscape environment. So, they put a tree in it, just it's too hot for the trees, and so, that's what we're trying to get at, is create a more beautified area, but something that will thrive. But again, the, the really thing that's looming over this is the maintenance of it. Adjacent to residential areas. Now, in some reason, my thing's not working. There we go. So, adjacent to commercial developments is a little bit different. I put 10 to 15 feet in here from the back of sidewalk, but what would actually be required is 10 feet from the back of sidewalk to wherever the building or the parking lot starts adjacent to a residential. Now, this would not be dedicated to the city. This would be the maintenance responsibility of the office, the commercial multifamily, whatever is adjacent to that. We do allow them to put a small, no higher than two-foot decorative wall in that area, or decorative boulders, according to the ordinance. And it says specifically that it will be planted according to the landscape ordinance and the zoning ordinance, but it is a maintenance requirement of the adjacent business. Now, they can count that towards your landscaping, which is only reasonable, but that doesn't put any onus on the city at all. It just gets a wider landscaped area adjacent to streets, and so.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, I'm done, you can ask questions.
So, on that, isn't your zoning typically that, on commercial properties, they have to stay 10 feet away before they can begin their parking lot anyways?
Not in all cases. Sometimes we allow business, buildings to be, in industrial areas, yes, we have a 10-foot setback, with commercial areas, generally, yes. So, I'd say generally, yes, but in some areas.
So it's not really that much of an imposition on anything, commercial, or industrial, or anything else? It's mostly a residential application that's got, okay. That's all needed.
Commissioner Green?
I like it. I think we need to do it all the way along Redwood Road, once, once we start redeveloping, doing stuff for Redwood Road, that's where we need it the worst.
I agree.
My, my thought, I know we're, we ought to go to the public hearing, but my, that's going to be short. My thought on this is that if we want the city to look good, we need to do this. I mean, i- i- it's, it's a trade-off. We either, we either, this is one of those, I think this is one of those costs of doing business. And, and that would be my message to the city council, is that this is a cost of doing business. If we want our city to look attractive and be welcoming, and, and, you know, I like the, the stuff that we've done on West 90th South, where we, where we've got some, something similar to this, out west, west of 4800 West. This is what we need to do to make the city look and feel better, and not have, like we've talked about in this commission before, all these walls that go right up against the sidewalk on Red, we've talked about the ones on Redwood Road, and we've talked about some of the walls along 90th South. And I, I think we need to eliminate, if there's going to be a wall, there's got to be a good gap. The question that I have is on the, on the dedicating, the commercial stuff is pretty easy, on the dedicating of the, the land of the city in a residential development, the, is there, is there any developer that's going to see this as a taking? Or are they just going to say, "That's the cost of doing business, to put a landscape strip in, we're going to call it good"?
Well, it's like anything else, if, if you have a plan, if it's established, you know, and it's very specific, and it's adopted by ordinance, you can apply it, especially if, when you get into illegal exactions, is when there's no reasonable connection or nexus between what you're requiring and what the business is doing. So, we just have to be careful with that, but especially in the commercial areas, where but for the business going in, we wouldn't need that. But it's arguable that it's, it's, you know, the community standard is nobody, I, I, I think nobody does a double-take when they see a commercial, a buffer, a landscape buffer with a commercial business. It's a, we just have to be careful with the uniform application. I think that's why I like what the city planner is, is advocating here, is this would apply to all of the arterial streets, and then there's specific criteria depending on whether it's commercial or residential. And if we're uniformly applying it and tailoring it to the type of, of zone it is, and no one can argue that, that it's, it's not reasonable, and there's no reasonable connection, that we're fine. So.
The, the other, the last question that I'd have, and this, this is directed more at the commercial development, but a- after I saw this modify, this, this ordinance, and I've driven down the street, and, and there's been, there's even a couple of streets that I think were really close to that, even along 7800 South, or 70th South, where my business is. I think there's about a 10-foot buffer between the back of the sidewalk and the parking lot. But I've noticed that what we've done in previous developments, we've allowed to put a sign, and the sign structure in the middle of that 10-foot area. Would we allow that in this, or should we put something in the code that says we don't want signs in that buffer area?
And I tend to agree with you, but, and so that would require an amendment, but there's, I think, a few years back, that was the practice, but then, five years, or five or six years ago, they changed the sign ordinance, then businesses wanted to have their signs as close as possible, but I don't think there's any reason to, particularly on arterial streets, there's no reason why that sign can't be held out of that buffer area. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, when I was looking at, like Maverick tonight, and I specifically looked at the Maverick sign down here at 78th and 13th, there's signs well back off of the, you know, the 10, but across the street, there's a couple other signs that encroach in that 10-foot area, and I think you can put a sign back off the 10 feet and not have a problem. It might creep into a parking spot, but I don't think you have much of a problem there.
It depends on who you're talking. If you're talking to a sign guy, he'll say it needs to be as close as, but, you know, but there's really a lot of argument, even business owners now are questioning the cost, the cost-benefit analysis of big signs anymore, because they really don't know if they're even worth the cost anymore on streets, and so, because they are pricey.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. After a tree, or a group of trees are established, they require less water. They have to be established and been there for a while, but then they require less water, and of course, help our air and things like that. The other thing I was thinking is, instead of regular turf, which requires a lot more maintenance and water, is the, the fistless grass. It requires less water, it looks just like turf. I've seen it in different developments that have required a, a 10-foot setback off of a road because of a main water line or something. And it does require, you wouldn't know it wasn't turf unless you went right over and looked at it. But it requires less maintenance, it requires less water. And so, I think this is a really good plan. You go down Redwood Road, and it's ugly. I mean, I, I'm the first to admit that. And I think that the signage, I think we should look back again at that. I, I think that we've become cluttered with signs. And if you go down 90th from Redwood Road, down to the end of our, our border, on the, especially on the south side, all of those businesses, I mean, they've got three or four signs out in front, and it detracts. And I, I think that maybe the ordinance should be looked at as to whether, in a commercial area, that they, they're allowed to use that area. They could set it back. And generally, if you're going someplace, you know where it's at. You don't just all of a sudden start, "Oh, look, there's a store." And so, but I, I think this is a really good idea. I just think it would be, you know, we should look at a, a grass rather than turf that requires less water and is easier to maintain.
All right, I'll bring that up with Ty and David. They're, they're very, very knowledgeable in what they do, and, and I think that they're working on a plant list, and, and I don't think they want to do anything that increases the workload of the parks department, if they can, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hatch?
I think this is fantastic. I think it'll really help the city to just look more planned. Question, I, I do agree with you, that I think the, the problem is going to be the maintenance from the city's standpoint. I live in an HOA, and we pay a minimal fee, and it maintains our area. I don't know how that would even go down with the community if they're on an arterial street. Maybe the commercial business has to take so many feet of the residential area. I don't know how we could, we can slice it, but I think if we get the community involved, and if there's a, a commercial area as well, it might help make that maintenance cost. I don't even know if that's even a possibility.
I don't know, and that's more probably illegal, because I know we've done a rather large assessment area in the Highlands, that's all under assessment area, and so, and right now, the fees are very minimal, and they maintain all, but citywide, I think the city, didn't they try to do that a few years back, past, I think it was for Stone Creek, anyway, but that would be some, I don't know the legality of it.
Yeah, I mean, let's, we could mention the Highlands Assessment Area. That, of course, is a large, multi-development planning area. And in their instance, if I remember correctly, each single-family dwelling or multifamily dwelling pays an, an assessment, because it's part of a special assessment area, for all of these. all of these larger, uh, grass strips, trees and these types of amenities, basically maintaining them. It's about $15 a month, um, and so that goes into a fund. Then the, the Parks Department doesn't necessarily directly do all of that work, but they had a minimum hire outs, uh, after a request for proposals, they'll, they hire a company then that those independent contractors come in and do the work. Uh, but it seems to have worked really well, because, uh, and peo- most people that live in those communities, they live there specifically because they like those enhanced, uh, grass strips and, and similar amenities. It's well worth it to them to pay the extra 15 bucks on their water and sewer bill. Um, you know, it's the type of thing that, uh, that seems to have worked well. And then, and then obviously then, any of those issues of exactions and takings or whatever are irrelevant, because the developer chose to put that in, set it up that way, and people chose to live there and they knew before they purchased their unit that that was the, the setup. So, how that translates into the rest of the community, I'm not sure, you know, because people pick neighborhoods and, uh, but, but it's, there are other options for how that could be done. We just have to be careful in, in the other areas that weren't initially set up that way, how we roll it out and, uh, and that type of thing. I know at least the council at this juncture is highly focused on aesthetics, especially along Redwood Row, Road and other, uh, main thoroughfares, and that's why I think they're highly likely to like something like this that focuses on arterials, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully that's somewhat responsive to what you're saying, but I think each neighborhood maybe is a little different on what they want and how you build a, I mean, it's, it's a matter of how do you build a consensus so that no one feels that that's being forced onto them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Well, and I, I think there, there's a couple of things here. One is that if, if we're gonna put a residential development along an arterial road, which by the way, as we've talked about at commission and we've talked about, uh, the vision of the city, we don't want very many residential projects along, uh, along an arterial road anyway. We don't want the wall, we don't want residential along the arterial, arterial road. We know there's gonna be some, but we'd really like to see commercial along the, the residential road anyway and, or on the arterial road. So, as we look at, as we look at things that occur, that's what we can also encourage is the, the vision of the city is to put more businesses along arteries and not the backside of houses. So, I think we can look at that. The other thing that I'm wondering is, I, I know the city already charges impact fee and, and this isn't part of this ordinance, but it's just something, I know we charge impact fees and those kind of things that, you know, I think there's a way that limited, at least for the least, the first few years of maintaining this, that the city could be able to almost create a perpetual fund based on what the, what the, uh, the developer puts in for impact fees to do some things there to, to help maintain that. So, that's just a thought, but I think there's, I think there's multiple ways to fund this. A lot of the things that the city attorney talked about, uh, impact fees, those kind of things. I think we can fund, fund this with minimal impact to the city and, and I have to tell you, everything that I've seen, the idea is like what you say, is the city council wants aesthetic, aesthetics, and I think that's what we need. Uh, we've got some, we've got some serious issues along certain parts as, as Commissioner Hanson's mentioned, Redwood Road and Ninety South and a couple of things that we need to turn those into be more inviting areas, and so I'm, I'm all good with anything that impro- improves that.
Commissioner Luthy?
I like both of those unique ideas. On top of that, another option is all new residential is required to put together an HOA for their detention ponds. So, why not incorporate that as part of their fee for their detention ponds, that this is now a fee for their, that, I mean, that wouldn't take effect for some of the existing neighborhoods that may, I mean, not that you're really going to take additional square footage out of these existing neighborhoods, so it's kind of a moot point, but new stuff, I think there's plenty of ways to fund it, that it takes it out of the city idea, so.
They have to have an HOA for the detention?
They already do. Yeah, it's existing. And whether that money goes from the HOA now to the city and the city pays, like you were talking about the Highlands, or the HOA company does it themselves, or however that gets worked out, but there's another way that it's already built in.
And, and that's an excellent point, because a lot of times what these developers will say to me is they'll say, well, and the last one to say this was Ivory, is they were trying to get out of, they wanted this on the corner of U111 and, uh, 8200 where they were putting, they had to put that large, it was almost a two-acre detention area, and they were trying to get the city to take that, and the city would not, because we just don't do that. We do regional detention. We don't do the small ones, don't accept them anymore. And what they say is, well, most, generally people don't mind paying into an HOA if they see they're getting something out of it. If it's just to maintain a, a detention area, for lack of a better wor- better words, that's not very sexy to most homeowners, you know, they just, oh. And so, I kind of like where you're going, because you can see, well, hey, our HOA is paying for that really nice, attractive front coming into our community, then they have something to take pride in their community also that they live in, 'cause each one of these developments does become its own little community, and so, um, I hadn't thought of that, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Green?
The, the other, the other thing, and maybe it's where we become more creative, but maybe it's the, you know, that 10 or 15-foot strip along the artery becomes the detention pond, and they could kill two birds with one stone, if that can happen. I mean, that's, that, that's part of the creativeness with engineers is the, that's right.
Detention pond downstairs.
No, but if they, if their landscape's right, th- they will be okay.
And they did do, if you look on 70th in front of the senior housing, uh, between 27 and 32, and that's where we did ours, and it was landscaped, uh, really nice, so it looks really, but the problem with detention areas is they only work where they work. They're, they're completely beholden to that stupid gravity thing and, unfortunately, I wish we could put them anywhere we wanted to, but they're usually, usually where they end up is in the prime spot. Yeah.
Well, I like the idea of aesthetics, because we talk about West Jordan not just being a bedroom community. How do we do that? Well, we need to attract businesses. How do we do that? Well, we need aesthetics so that people want to come here, so that businesses are here and people don't have to travel outside of the city, putting more wear and tear on our streets and, you know, polluting the air and being a danger to the residents. So, I think anything that we can do to enhance the attractiveness of West Jordan to people that live here, so we have pride in our community and to people outside of our city, then, then West Jordan can become more of a destination. We have a better stigma and perception, and I think all of those things coincide. The more amenities we have, the more businesses we have, the better the streets look, the more well-maintained the parks and, and, uh, park strips are. I think, uh, all of that would help, and I know all that costs money and manpower, but I think it's short-sighted if we, we feel that we can just skim by on minimum without maintaining or installing good amenities. Just my personal opinion.
It's that much more open space.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Luthy?
Did we already open this to public comment?
No.
I was gonna make a motion, but then I realized we probably hadn't done that yet.
Very good point.
So, I will hold off.
Thank you. Let's open this to the public comments section. Anybody who would like to speak on this?
Come on.
Anyone at all?
They're all gonna run in.
We'll close the public comments section, bring it back. Commissioner Luthy?
I'd love to make a motion.
Please.
Based on the information and findings sent forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council to amend the 2009 City Code, Section 1313, Landscape Requirements, adding requirements for landscaping adjacent to future and existing arterial streets.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Luthy, a second by Commissioner Hanson. Discussion starting with Commissioner Green.
I'd like to amend that, to add in paragraph B that no sign structure shall be located in that area, in the, in the commercial set aside, in the commercial area.
Commissioner Luthy?
Yeah, I'm open to that.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Great. We have the amended motion and the resecond, and any discussion on that? Is that any problem with, uh, city staff? Do you see any potential problems limiting signs?
Uh, no, but I think it'd be better for the record if, uh, Larry maybe reads into the record the proposed language to, to make that happen, just so that we have something to, with exact wording to go to the council.
Uh, reading paragraph B, adjacent to commercial office, industrial, institution, multifamily developments, less part of a previously approved master plan, development plan or streetscape plan, commercial office, industrial, institution and multifamily developments, adjacent to arterial streets shall contain a minimum of 10-foot landscaped area. The required 10-foot landscaped area shall be installed between the back of sidewalk to the adjacent development line, parking area, building area, et cetera, along the entire area adjacent to the arterial street. Decorative or retaining walls no greater than two feet in height may be installed in this area. Decorative boulders may be installed in this area. And then I would put, uh, right there, that no sign structure or portion of a sign structure is allowed in this required 10-foot landscaped area. Is that gonna help you at all, Julie?
Any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero, which brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening. Thank you very much, city staff. Thanks for being so dedicated in all you do. Thanks for your organization and time. Commissioner Quinney, or let's, uh, we have Mr. Gardner first.
Um, with what the legislature, I don't know if you've been following, um, and Duncan may, he may be more on the loop than I, but they're really pressing a few bills that, that could affect, uh, West Jordan, most namely the, the homeless shelter provisions. Uh, and what that could do is, and Duncan, I don't know whether, I don't know if it's a fine or whatever, whatever you'd call it, but it could be up to $200,000 a year.
Part of it's just an unfunded mandate, really, yeah.
Yeah, the, they're so, uh, the legislature's so, uh, vociferous about the federal government doing, then they do it to the cities. However, there could be another provision requiring, uh, certain percentages of, uh, affordable housing, and so that really will affect your jobs in the next few months if some of these bills get passed, and so I'll certainly keep you apprised, there may be a need to, uh, create a little more, uh, robust, modern income housing plan. Right now, there's nothing such as affordable housing in state of Utah statute. Now they're starting to insert things like that, and so, um, it's gonna require some attention of the Planning Commission, is what I'm saying, over the next few months to make sure that, uh, we're following statute if it's passed. Now, there's been laws passed in the, you know, they've been, become law, uh, that some cities have just chosen to ignore. In fact, the majority of the city's westerns, only one of six in Salt Lake County that, uh, reports according to statute our moderate income housing status. A lot of other communities just simply ignore that. So, there could be a, a little more, uh, robust requirement there. So, what I'm saying is that, uh, we may be in the next few months looking at some housing planning going on in the city. Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I think our one saving grace is we're perhaps in the top three cities of, in the county of being the most compliant with what we call, I mean, sometimes we call it affordable housing, but as Larry mentioned, it's really just moderate income housing requirements is all we have right now. The legislation might be, go beyond that, and I'm not saying that we won't have to do things to comply, but at least whatever the end result is, we'll perhaps be better off than almost every other city in the county, so, so at least that'll lessen the blow for us a little bit, that, in fact, I think it was just last year that you adopted your biannual, uh, revisions to update your plans. So, uh, even though we're not, it's not a get out of jail free card and a complete pass, it's at least a minimize the blow card, maybe is what we've got in place, so.
Thank you for the information. Commissioner Luthy?
It's just a matter of definition, though, right? Like, they're gonna say, any housing under $200,000 is considered affordable, so count all the people that are under $200,000 and you can check a box saying you've met this percent. I mean, that's what we're talking about here, isn't it?
It gets way more complicated than that.
Okay.
Because what it is, is the, the Office of Housing and Urban Development has set a very specific formula, and all of, and like I said, the city, you know, people are really, uh, fond of throwing out the term affordable housing, but as long as I've been in this business, there's never been a definition for affordable housing.
Right.
Because to me, it's a silly term, because what's affordable to Donald Trump is completely a different, and so what, what they chose to insert years ago was a provision for moderate income housing, but that's based upon median area income of the county in which you live in. And they have three categories below 30%, which nothing is affordable anywhere in Salt Lake County, because it is, it is just ridiculously low amount of rent, like $150 a month.
Right.
You know, that's what I was paying when I got married, you know, but, and then it goes from 30 to 50 and 50 to 80 and then 80 to 100 of the area median income. The only thing that we were ever really required to report on is what's the moderate income housing for the majority of the population between 80 and 100 and 50 and 80. The other stuff, we were never required to report on, because I think they found that, you know, if you're below 30% of the area median income in Salt Lake County, you are in dire poverty. You're, and, and I don't know what they're trying to get at with this now. I think what they're trying to do is they're trying to, um, they're trying to address a homeless problem that has become out of control. Now, and my, my, my take on this is that, so the state of Utah, the attacks, people that are in homes now, to put people that are homeless in homes, so you may threaten to put people in homes homeless, because you know, there, there may be some people that are really on the brink of, you know, this is, you know, this is all I've got for food, water and medicine, you know, and that's, you know, and then they get into the whole thing, well, does anybody under 30% of the area median income spend more than 30% of their money on housing? Well, of course they do, you know, because they don't have any income to begin with, and so there's no place, and so, you know, do you, do you go to the Chicago's and St. Louis style subsidized housing? Is that what they're wanting? And so, it's, it's really become an odd way to address a problem.
But it doesn't have anything to do with like the, the HUD-type homes or the subsidized homes, 'cause we have several apartment areas in West Jordan that are like that. Does that not count towards our benefits?
Well, we have real several six and eight apartment.
Ah, exactly. That's what I'm talking about.
But there's one not far from Calvin's, you know, isn't that one of, well, I know the one.
Item 13th and 70th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, there, there are those things now, but I don't know what the legislature thinks they're going to be able to fix with this.
Okay.
Because I think what they were trying to do is get all the homeless population out of Salt Lake City and spread it around.
Now, everybody else's cities, yeah.
And put them in West Valley and then South Salt Lake and, and, but what they found is that, hey, this is expensive to build. And, you know, and, and to me, and this is just my opinion, so, I would look at, well, if I'm living in Farmington, this is great, 'cause I'll pay my little fee and just keep all that out, you know, let it go to South Salt Lake, West Valley, and so, you know what I mean? And so, uh, I don't know, and so Duncan, I don't know if you're as confused by this as I am. I don't know what they're really, I look at this bill and I think, this is just odd the way it's written.
It, it really is, 'cause I mean, most other times when there's a problem, we look at all the solutions, then we weigh the merits, pros and cons of each solution, and then we go through a rational decision-making process and pick... we go through a rational decision-making process and pick the best solution. And somehow we missed a couple of those steps in the middle, went right from, here's the problem, here's the solution. It's like, well, I, I missed the whole middle part. I don't know where that part happened. Yeah, and, and so, yeah, and then the challenge is, is that the decision-makers that are using minimal, potentially minimal rational thought process are not including those that are ending up paying for the solution. And so, you know, I mean, if I was back in colonial times, I would probably say something, have a flag that says something like taxation without representation on it, or don't tread on me or something like that. But it, it really is crazy, because if, if the people that are going to be paying for and implementing the solution are not included in the process, and that process probably didn't really even happen anyway, somehow there's a flaw in the middle of all that. That's, that's kind of my perception. I, I think it's crazy. I mean, if, if we made decisions like that here, it may not turn out so well, but apparently the legislature can do that and, and we get the run of it. That's all I'm saying.
But we have to be better off than some of the other cities like Draper or some of the Upper East Side areas that have got much less of that, right? I mean, okay. Interesting.
Then the one thing, you know, I was thinking about this morning is that, you know, West Jordan has things like Utah's Boy Ranch or Westridge Academy. Okay, and that, that services a very troubled population, gets them on the right track, hopefully, and that, and over by.
There's one right by me. What is that one?
Yeah.
The Redwood Road.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that, I know, I don't know what the name, yeah.
It's got a whole trouble, there's teen population.
Yeah, then the, you know, just up the road on 6200 South where the Utah Boys Ranch used to be, well, that's a Salt Lake Valley mental health, and now it's a heroin recovery clinic, you know, and there's 80 people living in there that probably were homeless downtown when they did the whole, you know, where they got these people into treatment that are, and so is West Jordan giving any credit for that? No. All they're looking at is this, you know, the Midville Road Home type homeless shelter. And so I just, I give Duncan, it really was not taken with any input from the people that are paying for it at all. If somebody dreamed, if somebody fell in love with an idea, that's what I'm going to say. And so, you know, I have a lot of ideas, but.
Oh, no, I can tell you where it came from, or at least part of the push. But there's two things. The other one that they're not, that they're not including in West Jordan's number is the South Valley Sanctuary over here, because that houses women that are in a battered situation that would be homeless without the, without that shelter. The other, the other thing that I think is ironic with the city is that in our cap and grade ordinance, we have the exemption for low-income housing, and there hasn't been, as far as I can tell, since the time that I've been on the Planning Commission, I haven't had, we haven't had one applicant for that type of housing in West Jordan City. And I think that the reason why is because the developer, one, they have to deal with all the paperwork with the Olean Walker Housing Fund and all those other kind of things that are, that can be very crazy. But the other one is, they can make more money if they do market housing. And, and so the drive, the drive is to do market housing, and how are we going to do affordable housing if the drive is for the developer to make money? That, that's, that's the ironic thing is that, you know, you look at the Colossal Project, you look at the stuff at Jordan Valley TOD, the rents are phenomenal. And, and I have to tell you, you look even, you go over into that, into those mobile or the manufactured home area over on east side of 13th East, I can tell you those rents are not what we would consider affordable, because, because my family's trust owns one, and the, the property manager's got the rent to, on, even on one of those manufactured homes, that you'd be surprised what that's renting out at, because that's what, the market's driving this. The market's crazy, and the developers keep developing the stuff they're going to make money on. So it's just, I don't know.
Any other comment? How about a motion?
I have a motion that we.
Sure.
Thank you. Any, any objection? We stand adjourned until March 20th.